I was called to order the meeting, the October 4th meeting of the Danville Board of Directors. My name is Clayton Cardon, the Chair of the Board of Members. We have a form of our members, but only three. We have a couple of anticipated absences. So I'd like the other two board members who are here to introduce themselves.
I'm Molly Gleason, the clerk.
I'm Melissa.
I'm Melissa Conley, Board Member.
And we have administrators here and some other people from the staff. Mark Tucker, Superintendent. Sarah.
Sarah Welch, Elementary Principal.
Dave's also an administrator. Yep, Dave Schilling, Technical Experienceful Learning Director. There's some other people that are, that will be introduced as their slots come up to give presentations. And I'd like to go with that. Under additions and changes to the agenda, I have one addition that I'd like to talk about. And then maybe one possible thing we're going to add. So one of the things I want to add to the agenda is, add to the administrative report. I'll need a motion for this. I'd like to add separately, this, the Career Technical Experienceful Learning Program Director update, which will come in separately from the principal's reports. And I think we're discussing accordingly. Can you discuss that? Like, I'd like to add that to the agenda. I'm ready to give more of the details on.
I will move to add.
CTV program update. I have a right under Principal, right before student. I have to get a second. Thank you, Melissa. All right, any discussion? Yeah, could we maybe just kind of attend to that or work something? We start putting in the term CTV. You want to name it Danville Works? I'm happy to change that. Danville Works.
Yeah.
So. Do you mean that motion? So, yeah. All right, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
As well, makes enough. All right, moving on, and then we were going to, in a discussion about the potential impact of the school innovation project.
I want to, I want to give an abbreviated presentation and I'd only address the issue around Act 72. Since we met with the advisory committee last week, get some additional information on point back to finance. Presentation piece, so to complete it and refine it a little bit. There'll be some changes. I don't grasp it. I don't know if we consider it alarming. But what you're trying to do is make it more accurate and more specific to the range of taxpayers that we have in Danville as opposed to just focusing on residential tax. We got a lot more information. We have some rules released out to help us with that. As soon as I have that.
But in the meantime, we're going to get an update on Act 72. So we're going to change the potential impact of school innovation project to Act 72 update as the agenda. I'd be looking for a motion to change that to the Act 72 update. One of the board members.
I'll move to change that agenda item to Act 72 update.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that? Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of making that change?
Aye.
Also, I as well. Thank you. Okay, so that, that puts us on into the, into the meat of the meeting.
Clayton, I have one too. Um, do we want to add a residency update from our executive session? We had said we'd follow up today at this meeting for the families that were approved.
That would be an executive session.
Yeah.
Are we prepared? You're prepared to do that?
I have an update.
Okay, great, so.
Can we, can we do that with, when we left the executive session, we referred to them as family one, two, and three? Can we still do it that way? Or do we need to go into executives? I'm sorry, I, I'd forgotten Sarah, so I didn't.
I did too. Fortunately, our admin assistant is amazing and she had it on her agenda for today. So that's, I, I can look it up and figure out which family is which, and I'm fine saying it.
It's not anything that's going to take any action?
Nope, it's just an update.
Quick update. Okay, is it easier with names? Is it easier with numbers? We're not going to remember the people, the, the numbers. So, okay, you had an executive session? So. And was this BSA? That's, this is, this is where you tricked me here because I don't have this in front of me. The reason that I'm going to executive session, but I think it's the, that would be DSA and then 313. Give me a second here, everybody. And Mark's going to find it. I'm going to race and Mark's going to beat me. That's the way I hope this goes. Yes, 313.
Yes, it's, um, BSA. One BSA, 313. Seven.
Seven, so I thought it was seven. Yeah. Okay, so what I'm looking for now is I'm looking for a motion from one of the board members to go into an executive session to discuss three residency issues. With BSA 313 seven being the reason for these second sessions. So word there, I should say.
I will move to go into the public session to discuss an update on three residency issues. According to BSA section 213.
Thank you. And now, a second on that?
I'll second.
And if anybody has any questions, that is just as good as a parent confidence challenge. This is student confidence challenge, parent confidence challenge. So if nobody has any questions off all that, we'll add that very end of the meeting after public input. No, after future agenda. So that you can, you can all go. I'll call that question. All in favor?
Aye.
I as well. That's great. Okay, thank you. Now, heading into the meeting itself, we're going to look at and discuss the September 6th minutes looking for approval. Molly wrote these up last month. I took a good hard look at them. Melissa, did you get a chance to look at them?
I did, yep.
All right, so if you have any questions about them or any amendments? I also did not be looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 6th, 2022 minutes as written.
Okay, great. Do you have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I as well. Okay, great. So those are approved. Moving on, administrative reports, and we're going to have five today. The first one is the superintendent's report. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Mark. And let him tell us some things that are of interest in this report that we might not have seen.
It was very tricky this month, and I sort of scratching my head wondering why they didn't have more, more to say. It's been very few things. People are very busy. The number two that was in the report on the budget season, I just want to actually, I wanted to ask if any of the board members had any questions about that because it was a little. I'm not saying that we're going to have to, this is not saying that we're going to have to make cuts, but we are taking, going to be taking a hard look at where we're standing with remaining S R grant money. The projection was that we would be able to fund the intervention positions through next school year. I want to make sure that that's true. And if there's any kind of a shortfall between that versus funding summer programs and after school programs, we're going to have to make a decision on which of those two take priority. And then it's, if, if for some reason it looks like we're going to be short of money to to fund the intervention positions that are grant funded, and we have that conversation in each of the district meetings about which positions are retained and which one, you know, and is there any that we don't think that we can continue to pay, can we move to the budget? I don't have any, you know, I don't think to set off any alarm about that. I'm just saying that we are going to be looking at that. And doing our due diligence to make sure that we can continue to fund those positions. One way or the other.
So to clarify, in this, in this building, there are four grant funded interventionist positions, which are all filled. Elementary reading, elementary math, middle school reading, middle school math. And they're all grant funded and they're all, that, that's all money that was S R one and as soon as we could get some of the S R two.
S R two and now, and then, and now the S R one and S R two essentially spent. So we're, we're living off of S R three. But we are we are facing potentially a fiscal cliff like everybody else.
And the, the focus of the S R money has been student recovery, and this is the best way to do the recovery. Things in the extended learning, I want to be both, what you had to focus on, the extended learning of the one of the books, the two of the books, the after school program. We'll start deciding, I mean, that's going to be a difficult position because how many people are in the act?
Can I update the actual people that are S R funded? It doesn't impact elementary interventionists. It's our it does a little bit. So it's a five through eight literacy interventionist, a nine through 12 literacy interventionist, a seven through 12 math interventionist, and then Danville Works is also grant funded. Both of, both of those positions are grant funded through S R.
Right. But I don't want the message going out of this meeting to be that any of those positions are after. We just don't know.
No, and I, I don't want to, I don't want that either.
Right, so I just want to be transparent with the board that this is something, this is an important piece of work going in.
I think it's important to tell us because we turned over board members since we've proposed those positions. So it's important to keep it, so thank you for that. Pass that. It just, there's the, there's the persistent, you can see it was fresh about COVID and it's, and it affects us here and there and so.
We're following, as always, we're following the state guidelines on when does somebody have to be out and when can they be back at work?
This is our reality. All right, are there any questions for Mark? All right, thank you. I will move on then to student services report. And the student services report, you guys got this report today. Does anybody have any questions about student services? That you could, they're, they're, why not, Mark answer now? If you have any questions when you read through it at your, in your time and you want to direct those questions at these people, you can get to them at the CCSU office, just as easy via email or via the phone. And the numbers are at the top. So you can ask those questions directly of them if you need something specifically clarified. But in the meantime, you can ask it. And then, oh, hey, I didn't know. Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Hi, yes, I am here.
Sorry about that. I'm not, I haven't seen you in, I, I don't recognize your face.
That's okay. That's why I'm here tonight.
Okay, great. So this is going to be, this is going to make it a lot easier for me. Do you have anything to tell us?
Beyond what's in the report?
Nothing beyond what's in the report right now.
Can you tell us how many students in the supervisory union are on five or four plans? Or at least in Danville? I guess it's relevant only to Danville.
Not off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
I just, I always want to know. Dana's always great. So, that's all right. Nice to meet you. Thank you. And I'm sorry for not recognizing that you were there. Okay, great. So we'll move on then, no questions, to the principals' report. Sarah's going to deliver the principals' report, sorry, deliver the principals' report, I should say. And we're going to have read through that one. And if you have any questions for Sarah, you can start, or Sarah can bring us through some of the stuff that she wants us to know again.
Um, I did, I did want to highlight a couple of things. On page one, we talk a little bit about the Dream Program, which is a Vermont mentoring program that pairs high school students with elementary students. We have been able to grow that program tremendously. Our elementary and middle school counselors, Adriana Wetrabski, Danielle Scott, have been instrumental in helping to get that off the ground and running. We've seen it have a huge impact on both the mentees and the mentors last school year, and we're really excited to get that off the ground and are adding several new mentor mentee relationships for this coming year. So that's, that's an excitement that we have. Um, I wanted to also draw your attention to the gym project update. Randy got a date update today, so the new anticipated date is only a few days later, but it's October 20th. And that project will take five days to complete all of that, so I know Randy and our gym teachers are really hoping that that is done and finished and takes as minimal gym space as possible, so that's, that's been on the back burner since last spring. Um, and then I, you briefly asked Clayton about after school program. The after school programs, the biggest this year that we've seen it, that I've seen it since being here, we're at 30 students. The program's open for kindergarten through sixth grade. I don't believe we have any sixth graders currently enrolled. But we have a variety of staff able to provide specific enrichment activities for two separate age groups so that we're not trying to span span those for kindergarten through fifth grade. But that's, it's been really nice to see so many kids in the cafeteria and other spaces in the school. Um, and I think those were the big, the big pieces to highlight. Any questions?
How did the solar cutting go? The ribbon cutting for the solar? That looks like it was a lot of fun.
It, it did look like it was a lot of fun. I had COVID, so I can't answer that. I helped to coordinate it with the guy and then I said, sorry. But, yeah, it seemed like a great thing. I don't know if Dave, I think Dave was out there if he wants to jump in at all. But.
Sure, our, it was really, our kids asked a really phenomenal questions. And it was cool to have it actually be interactive. You know, sometimes when these presentations happen, it can just be sort of like, here's the thing, cut the ribbon. Our kids kept it engaged, like this question after question about household functions, where it's kind of like, there was a lot of dialogue. So I'm really excited to. Well, I appreciate it. That's a culmination of a lot of work. There's a lot, a lot of boring questions along the way and a lot, a lot of things that happened on the top of the building to try to grab, we're glad to have it. So thank you for that. All right, do we have, any of us have any questions?
About the after school program? I'm a parent of a kid in the actual program. I haven't seen it before, but I would say that my, my son is absolutely thrilled with it and having a great time. So the is a, is a huge, is a huge fan of that and it's been great for us, I just want to. Well, at least some kudos to, to, it seems like the program's expanded this year. So.
There's a lot of kids in there. I was in there the other day. There was something else volunteer wise. There's a lot of little people in there. They're all, they're getting fed, they're getting talked to, they're getting dealt with. They're not just, they're not just sitting there pretty great. All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the student representative update. Thomas is here. Glad you're here.
Um, do you, do you want me to talk about some stuff?
Here's the part I want you to talk about. If you can, everybody got Thomas's report? Can you tell me something about your project and how you think that the student representative can be improved?
Um. You put me on the spot here.
It's okay. I mean, so, so here, here's why I'm interested in that. I, I want to see if you can help me because later in the day, we're going to, we're going to talk about adding a new student representative. And I want to know what you think is lacking. So I may get with you. We had email here, trying to figure some stuff out with you, if that's okay with you. Maybe I'll talk this through with you because I'm going to need some help trying to figure out where you think we can be better helping you and where we think you can be better helping us. Or what, what, or what do you think that the next person who comes up to fight? Can, can you do things differently? Can you, we can do things differently to make them more inclusive, to be more inclusive. So that's the sort of thing, if you'd be willing to let me get in touch with you, I'll get in touch with you about that and we'll talk about it. Guys, you may have any questions for, do you know anything about Fright Night? You give me a Fright Night?
Um, I know we're doing it again.
Are you pointing? Are you pointing?
I don't know what my job is.
All right, me either. I, I, same thing from, I don't know my jobs. All right, any questions for Thomas?
No, Mike. Share that, sorry, Melissa, can you share that report with me?
Yes, I, I'm sorry I didn't. I'll send it to you now. I sent it to, it's in the packet. I sent it to Katie today. I sent it to the board members. I'll forward to you.
Okay, if it's in the packet, I can probably pull it up. Thanks.
And my question was going to be the exact same as yours, Clayton. I was curious to hear from Thomas what, what you were looking at as part of your project. So Clayton, it sounds like you're going to connect with him and then can bring, bring that information back to us too.
Well, I think, I think you can as well because if he's got input, maybe you'll hear it differently than I hear it. So it'd be great. We'll both talk. All right. And we add to the agenda, I'm going to move on. Thank you, Thomas. We add to the agenda the Danville Works update from Dave, and we got this last week. I'm sure everybody had a chance to look at it. And we're going to let Dave tell us anything he wants to about it. If you'd like to, if you have any questions for Dave Schilling, the board members, let me know and let Dave know and he'll answer them. Um. Getting over old, it's not over, but here I am. There, we've, we've been doing a lot. So this is a pretty comprehensive, of course. I tried to sort of track where we were, both our challenges and our successes. I think that just getting kids involved in Danville, learning, whatever the whole people. Yeah, you're standing outside, so it's a positive. It's, you know, a lot of kids just cycling through and having a party. Pretty stable. Middle school is a little wonder. I find it exciting, but I haven't done it. But it's cool that the select board has really embraced this project. It's like we came to us and said, we'd like to use some of our funding to create a garden that's lasting at the school, used by meal site, the meal site. We're, we're happy to find volunteers that in the summer can have given us, so it's exciting to do that. Challenges that I put in there are just that we have not been checking conditions, so I'm teaching classes as well as trying to get something around and some of the program development, reaching out to businesses and parts of this that I want to see happen and want to see solidify it. Yeah, the middle school program we're delighted off the scratch. I try really hard not to do things that suck. Want to make them meaningful as possible, but that takes planning. So. So you got to watch and make sure people keep their fingers. We do want to make sure people keep their fingers. Yeah. It's a, it's a safe contraption, but believe me, it's a song. I know my son is shop age and doesn't know his fingers. Got all his fingers. Fair point. He still has all his fingers. That's great, thank you. Sure. Any questions? Melissa, Molly, any questions?
No, I just wanted to say I love that report and thought it was just for us to get that. I feel we're lucky in terms of community with only one really getting that information. I don't know if there's a way to, to share that to the broader community about what's going on, if it, you know, I know there's a website, but yeah, it's the best communication tool to get that out to the general community. It really is a great project and doing amazing work for the students.
Yeah, um, I think, I mean, I can put it on some, I mean, like a front push board.
Yeah.
I can definitely, we can send it all, you know, I'm a little, I just want to make sure we're not or not, you don't know, I don't like talking of things that I do.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, we can definitely, we can get that out in, in, you know, for member parents. It's been on, you know, since, since we've been, we've posted some updates from it on the school Facebook page. I sort of hinted at a link to the other Facebook page there, but I haven't actually come out and said it's, yeah, mostly. Have these very suggestions too from board members on how you feel.
Yeah, I think I just lately been thinking, there's so much that we hear about the negative side of what's going on, but it is such a really great program that I think there's so many positive things going on that there's a way for us to the board to really communicate those as well, not putting it on you, but there's a way for us to collectively communicate the good things that are going on in this school, I think would be really helpful. Sure. Yeah, front porch forum would be good and the website's great, just getting that around somehow too.
Yeah, I mean, you put your YouTube videos up. Maybe you can promote yourself on basketball. You can sponsor by Danville Works.
You can take a phone.
Yeah, I mean, the more, the more people that know, the more people that we can attract as well. That's the other thing. It was notable in this report is that somebody is getting tuitioned too. And so the, the more people that know about this, the more people that we can find that can read. So there's a question in the Q and A? No, there's not. Oh, from Chelsea, so from Chelsea Hewitt, it's not a question. Chelsea Hewitt, since she's happened to show now. Chelsea Hewitt is a community member. There we go. Happy to share on the Chamber page and Chamber social as well. That'd be great. Thank you, Chelsea. Great, thanks. Yeah, Chelsea, I'll send a, um, I'll send a link. I'll just, I'll tag Chamber or something. That'd be great. I think I will just put a post on this and say, hey, here's where this information's going to be.
Yeah.
If that's okay. Sarah, is that cool with you?
Yes.
Awesome. Great, thanks. Any more questions for Dave? Any questions for anybody else today? Hearing none, I'll move to our board business. And there are some new administrators that I want to meet. We just met Anne, and I'm sorry, again, Anne. And so it looks like we have Des, Jen Lemery, Des Hertz, Jen Lemery, and Anne Landry. So let's, let's start with Anne. And, and I will just say that Anne is here and she's going to, sorry, everything that she wants to know and I will back with. All right, great.
Thanks for having me.
I didn't know, I, so.
I'm, I'm, hi, really excited to be part of CCSU. So I'm new to Vermont. I have lots of years of experience in special education administration in New Hampshire. So while I'm comfortable in a leadership role, I am learning all the intricacies of the Vermont A O E and special education rule changes. So I'm really just getting involved in, in all of that, and I'm really thrilled to be here. It's, it's been a great welcome from everyone, from all of the districts and the central office as well. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Anne. Thank you for your report earlier. Do you have any questions for Anne? Mark, want to introduce our next, our next player?
Okay, uh, next is Des Hertz, and she is in the position of.
Hi, Des.
Hey, everyone. Nice to see you via Zoom. I'm curriculum director, as Mark said, and I'm coming from a couple decades of experience in a neighboring district from Kingdom East. And, excuse me, I'm also very excited to be here and feel like I have received a warm welcome from the central office staff as well as all of the principals in the district and CCGSU. And I'm excited also to be working with Jen Lemery, who's, we, we call ourselves a curriculum team, really focused on learning systems and building relationships this year as we endeavor in our new roles. Happy to take any questions.
Are you doing the continuous improvement plan?
Indeed. Indeed. Thank you for asking. The continuous improvement plan for FY '23 for this school year has been submitted and approved, and I would be happy to share more information about that with you. We have a couple of goals. One on academic achievement and one on safe and healthy schools. And I feel really like I, I came into a situation where there had already been some really focused and productive collaboration. So we kind of sealed that up this summer at Vermont Principles Association. All of us together, a newly formed team, and I just had the, the job of tidying up that work and submitting it. So, yeah, we, we have done that.
And are you both supervisor union wide primarily and then tailored specifically to the school?
Just supervisory, they changed the, the guidelines out this year. We only have two of C I T as the S U one.
That's right. And it's also good for two years. So we'll review it at the end of this year, and if there are any changes we'd like to make, we can. But that's new as well. We can continue to work on the same goals for two years, so there's more longevity in those goals.
So do you anticipate then, Mark, her presenting that once at the SU level?
Um, yeah, I can invite her to come in and present that. I don't know if you want her, you've got a pretty busy agenda next week.
No, I just, I was just curious.
I have a, yeah.
How, how you plan on handling that? If you want to handle it that way, if you want to flip it and invite invite everybody from every board to the SU meeting so that they could see the continuous education process that bite them. Anyway, that's all.
So, Des, for your ratification, Clayton's also the chair of the.
I met, I met her in person. Her I know in real life.
We met. We bumped into each other on a dog walk. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
All right, cool. Thank you. All right, one more.
Last but not least, Jen Lemery, and she is our curriculum integration specialist. We redefined from having two directors to a director and a people that, uh, integration specialist. And Jen is, Jen has hard at work defining what that actually means. Because there is no such same position anywhere else in the state of Vermont, so she's special.
Awesome. So before you start, I'm already asked a question, so tell me all you can.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll keep my introduction short so we can get to your questions. Yep, I'm Jen Lemery. I'm returning to Vermont after about 20-ish years away. For the past 15 years or so, my family and I Um, for the past fifteen years or so, my family and I have been teaching abroad in various countries, so, um, we're just repatriating to the United States and, um, like Anne and Des said, the warm welcome has been wonderful and, um, I've enjoyed getting to know, um, the systems and starting to build relationships with people throughout the SU. My experience, so like Mark said, this is a new role and, uh, my teaching experience is in multilingual education, so I kinda, um, bridge a little bit of the gap with the MTSS work coming down the line between Anne and curriculum. Um, that's kind of my expertise area, but that, I'm doing much more than that. And what questions might you have?
But did, did you see, did you see yourself with some challenges coming from the, from the out of the country, uh, teaching to the more, you, now you're not actively teaching as much as you're actively instructing and, and sort of empowering teachers, and I was wondering how that challenge was going.
It, yeah, it's, um, part of my role previously was, was, um, coaching and consulting teachers in, um, looking at instructional practices. Um, so I do have a bit of background in that, um, and may, mostly the instructional practices that we're looking at were creating equity. Um, and my focus was equity around language and culture. But looking at instruction and figuring out where our students are and what they need and how we can get them there, so that that framework is actually the same, um, internationally or here. It really just boils down to enabling people to have conversations and looking at data and saying, this is where our students are. This is where we would like them to go. How can we get them there together? And so I think the challenge um, that we have at the SU is just starting those conversations. I think it's, um, they're happening in pockets and, and we want to just make sure that we continue to have those conversations.
Awesome. That sounds, it sounds like you're ready to do it. And I thank you for, thank you for going.
Yeah.
All right, great. If you may, the new administrator, thank you ladies. And do you want to, want to tell me anything to go or do you want to stay? For your thoughts?
No, I don't want to go. I mean, I tell them they're welcome to stay, but they're home.
So you guys, your houses, we're, we're going to continue our meeting and you're welcome to stay and listen to our meeting. We're about to do the enrollment and some other stuff. If you'd like to stay, you can, but if you slink, if you slink away, we're not going to notice. I didn't notice Anne was here, so.
I can leave it silently as I came in. Thank you all very much. I just have one further comment just to add, um, that Des, Jen and I really, um, are working together very, very closely because the overlap between curriculum, uh, special education now with MTSS and all the work we're doing to look at data, um, it just ties in together and we're working really, really closely together and, uh, forming a great team.
I thought you were going to tell me you're working really closely together because you have no situation in the CCSU office because you're one chair.
Oh. You're here, Anne. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Bye.
The next item on the agenda is, um, official school enrollment numbers, and I'm going to turn this one over to Sarah. They were part of one of her reports. And see if she. We have the numbers and we needed the number. So do you want to tell us anything, anything you noticed about these numbers that you think is noteworthy?
So technically, these are, these don't get formalized until the state, um, until the beginning of October. Excuse me, um, but I'm glad I did these when, when I did them, because then I was out for the rest of the week. Um, one of the things that is down a little bit is the total number of tuition students. Um, we had a large senior class last year with a lot of its members being tuition students, um, which, which was great. Um, we've, we've gotten quite a few, like Dave talked about Danville Works. Um, the majority of those students, um, in that program are tuition students, so it's, it's recruiting kids from, um, outside of Danville, which is just what we anticipated. And so part of that is, you know, continuing the process, making sure to recruit, um, within the local middle schools. Uh, Larry and Simon have already been doing that. There was a Kingdom East Fair at the college yesterday that they were a part of. Um, and then they have other scheduled events where they actually go directly into the, into the school and meet with eighth graders and things like that to help bring, um, those numbers up a little bit.
I would add to that, this is the first year in a couple of years that that Kingdom East Fair has happened.
Yes.
Get herself in front of hundreds of kids.
Yeah, so like, three years ago, we had to limit how many kids we could take for the class that just graduated and the class coming in, and so we weren't necessarily being as active, and there was no way to be as active with the pandemic, because of this, and so this is uh, to a degree expected.
Yep.
But we obviously, we love to let kids know that our school, uh, can see them and can teach them and can teach them up.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year is the year, Dave, I think we limited both the ninth grade and the tenth grade. We had to cap them because of COVID requirements.
Yeah.
So there now the juniors and seniors, right? So, yeah, yes, it's been, that's two years ago.
The year prior also was capped, when they just graduated was capped, you'd be in a separate action, but all three of those years were capped.
Right.
The first, the first one, we had a different administrator and it was capped because we didn't have any more capacity to teach English students. We had as many students as we possibly could, that was forty-five. And that was in a meeting, I'm not sure I was, I think I might have been in the chief seats for that particular meeting. I remember that half. That was before, that was before you were here, before you, I think it was before, uh, Tim or Dave would know, but they're both out, but that was second, was that one up, you want to? But we had to cap one year because we simply could not take anymore. And then the next year that you came, I think it was the same thing. We took the cap at forty-five and then we had the COVID cap for the, and this is some of that with the ventilation, and so this is going to be one of the first times that we've not had, um, as many as possibly could.
Yeah, so that, it means we get, we get, uh, several kids, uh, high schoolers throughout the year that for whatever reason, their current school isn't working out for them and they want to transition, and so we absolutely anticipate that happening to increase those numbers a little bit throughout the school year. Um, but I think looking forward and not having to cap, um, because of various restrictions, we'll see those numbers continue to grow.
So what's the cap right now?
There is no, there is no cap.
There is.
No, there was, there was a cap in two years, but it was specific, already three that was specific to those particular classes.
Right, so just when you start having, the only option is to have like twenty-five kids in an upper one class, that, that's the challenge. You know, we play classes based on projected enrollment, but if that gets crazy, there, there are some classes that are just sort of like ninth grade, month cap classes, and it's hard to, um, there's a hard to. You know, we just make sure about some of those. In previous, previous years, pre-meet, um, the high school had nine periods in their day, and they had classes, they had math classes that were semester long classes. Um, both math teachers indicated that they do not feel that semester-based math classes are it's really tough to get content in, and it's tough for kids who might take a semester-based math class and then have a two or three semester gap in their progression and then move into something else. So having a semester-based math class gives you more room for like, like tuition students, but significantly, education problems, and that's something to, just to compare across like five years ago now.
And what is the max in terms of a high school? What's the max number of students that, you have that number about the max number of students that our building can hold for high school?
Sure, um, give me one second. Sarah, I'm looking at enrollment right now at the high school.
Okay, thanks.
When we start, when we start seeing classes, um, about, of thirty-five, that's when we start, it becomes not just basic classes. There are some rooms that are absolutely bottlenecked, uh, well, like, just an example of that. Can't hold people inside and, and those. So right now, I'm looking at twenty-sixth in the ninth grade class and twenty-eighth and eleventh grade class, uh, thirty-three in tenth grade and forty in senior class. So those, like, thirty-five and above, I always want to say, hold on.
I think the cap was on that senior class was forty-five, but, yeah.
So with that recruitment, I'm getting the weeds too much, but with the recruitment happening around Danville Works, how many would you say we deserve coming in, you know, at this point?
Yeah.
Do you ever think of the people if they were interested?
Um, so looking at those numbers, that'd be a question. And some of that for the future depends too on just. I'm not settling on whether or not that should be just a, to replace in child teacher position, we may be working for a lot of the year role, um, but connect, both connect and soar can, are capped at ten, and that's, we could fit the two of us, without me being a school to start. So connect is at eight to ten right now, so is a ten of ten. There is capacity to increase those paper programs, and we evaluate a big one sign, increase, and, and double block last night. So I can see. I can see getting there. The other interesting thing about Danville Works capacity benefits program, which is a piece that I really want to. A few kids who are in meaningful partnerships with local businesses, and the kids are not necessarily with building, but are students. So if we can do that, that's something that increases enrollment, while also getting kids. This is a, turning into a rambling non-answer.
Oh, no, I know, I know, they're in your report too.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, so that's, next, next time I see you, I'll have never given this number. Yeah, there's, there's potential to get a couple more in.
In a non-standard.
In a standard way.
Yeah.
All Danville Works students, there, there's nothing that's fully Danville Works, right? So, any students coming in under this program is also, is entirely. Is a member of our. I think that's all.
Okay, right, so is that all we have on, um, student numbers?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's my, those were my big points to chat about.
And they would do October the fifteenth, right? That was the, the due date for the numbers?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's gonna be done. We remember that, right? Okay, awesome. And now we're going to move on to building advisory update. So building advisory, uh, meeting last week, Eric, you could back that.
Um, yeah, we've actually had, uh, two meetings since the last school board meeting. Um, so our first meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, um, on, uh, we listened to my recording, um, was, uh, we mostly went through, uh, fairly in detail the facility report. Um, we had some questions about the veracity of that report. Um, I think we've put those questions to bed. Quite well, um, we, uh, we really went through sort of, uh, and have Marvin, uh, Withers go through with the fine tooth film, um, and, and make sure that, um, his experience, uh, also matched with some workshop, um, and, uh, he had raised some questions about that, but upon further, uh, review of those, uh, items, um, we, the facility report was found to be, uh, uh, quite accurate, uh, with the exception of, uh, these windows were actually replaced, uh, uh, about ten windows were replaced in the school, so that was, uh, the one thing that was not labeled in the report that. Uh, also at that meeting, uh, uh, I was, uh, asked to sort of be the continued spokesperson here to the board, so you guys are stuck with me, uh, I guess, uh, as long as this, uh, continues, uh, for, for the advisory group. And then, uh, that was sort of, and then we also, uh, talked a little bit about Act Seventy-two, uh, which prompted, uh, uh, Mark to follow that up, uh, a couple of weeks later, and this happened, uh, last Wednesday, um, in our meeting there, uh, Mark gave a, a wonderful presentation about the, the financing, um, of these types of projects, uh, how, um, for example, when these keep funded there, I, I guess entirely rebuilt in place.
For all intent and purpose, right?
Um, and, uh, and so that was a wonderful presentation. Uh, we also had, uh, Cameron Richard from Drews Collins, uh, coming in uh, and answer questions and present some more, uh, detail on the, on the options. So, um, at this point, uh, we, we felt as a group that we've gotten, uh, through essentially a lot of the, the, the main questions that we had, and so now, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow night at six P M. Um, where we will be taking, um, a poll and going through and really discussing the options. To this point, we've really been discussing a lot of what's around the options, not necessarily what are the pros and cons and what do we, what do we actually want to do, more just getting our head around the problem, um, and, and now, uh, uh, now it's time to, to start to think about what these options actually mean and understand what questions we, we want to go to the community with and, and get their feedback on, uh, to understand the what's important to the community as, as we bring that back. And so, um, we will have, um, some, some homework, uh, after this meeting tomorrow. Um, but, uh, but that's, that's where we're, we're at right now, and I'm hoping to deliver, um, we'll see, we'll see where we are as a group, uh, uh, how united we are, uh, tomorrow, and then, uh, we'll, we'll be hoping to, to deliver our information as soon as we possibly. That's, that's really where, where we're at. We spent the last one, we're fact-finding. And, and understanding the problem, so. Any questions?
Melissa, do you have any questions? She's on it. Molly, any questions? I still have Friday nights watching them, man. I'm living the life.
That's an exciting Friday night.
It's gonna be great. Super great. I, I, I feel for anybody who's in this room, I feel for you now, because I have to watch people. All right, thank you very much, Eric. And good luck tomorrow night.
This should, this should be good. Yeah, we, we'll have to have a bit of a briefing meeting, uh, because Larry's not here, so we'll have just Sarah for just an hour, so. Um, our forum will last for nine hours.
Yeah, since.
We have a time box.
One, 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 four, and then it said that you've got to have numbers. Yeah, we're dancing on that tonight, yeah. We're, we're at the bar, my, my. All right, so we'll move on to, um, what we, what we renamed the Act Seventy-two update and let Mark Pepper tell us a little bit about the Act Seventy-two questions that got raised at our last meeting.
So. Um, Act Seventy-two is legislation that was actually passed in the session twenty twenty-one, and it did a number of things, and I'll read it real quickly. It required the Agency of Education to do a building inventory of all public schools in the state of Vermont. Um, the, the inventory is essentially complete, uh, there is a, uh, there is a facility dashboard that the agency put up. We looked at that last week in the advisory group meeting, I think it's Sarah saying that it essentially, it doesn't have a lot of, as much detail as our reports have, but it does correlate with some important things like the the useful life of major systems in this existing building is basically open enough. So there's something, um, I can't remember the acronym now, F C I, and what, do you remember what that, Cam told us with that? So facility, something.
Yeah, F C I.
Index. Basically, what it says is that if you were at, if you're, if that number was at zero, you'd have to bring the building. If it's at a hundred, you could expect it. Uh, you exhausted the useful life, and the major systems in this building are all approaching one hundred. Okay, in terms of useful life. I'd also called out some problems with electrical system in the building that you already know about. And, uh, Mark, I can send you the link to that dashboard.
Yeah.
It's just facility condition.
Thank you. The facility condition index. So basically, the way that works is the higher the number, the worse off you are. And the Danville buildings for, their numbers are high and they're above the state average. Act Seventy-two also called for two additional activities that required, uh, the, the Agency of Education to update school construction facility standards. Okay, and, um, the Agency of Education is state board together. They have not been updated since before they stopped funding school construction projects in two thousand and seven. The deadline for submission of that work is January fifteenth of twenty twenty-three, but that date is, is likely to be pushed out because the agency doesn't have a work. Um, and I, we heard that directly from, superintendent heard that directly from the secretary. Um, also due on January fifteenth is a recommendation from the state board to update and adopt a capital outlay financing formula, and that as I understand that, it would be. As I understand that, it would be a formula that would say. If you have X amount of money available for school construction, what is the financial criteria would be that for going out and sending it to the. I have no idea what that's gonna look like, that is also new. On, on January fifteenth, I don't know the status of this thing, but it's worked on that, that's have to be expanded. Or pushed out the way, um.
There's a quick comment, the, the formula that they abandoned in two thousand and seven relied on the construction standards, so presumably.
Right, so you can't do one without the work, you can't do the second one on the first, I think, that makes perfect sense. So.
They're asking for any extension on the first, on the first of them.
That's likely, no, I, I, we were told that they're likely to ask that extension, whether the legislature is gonna grant it or not, that's not. You know, but I don't, if they don't have the work done, I don't know what are they gonna do, they're gonna have to. Right, I guess, you know. To say, well, we don't have the work done, what are they gonna do, say, we'll give it to the. So I, I think it's gonna get pushed out. Changes to the school construction standards are potentially relevant in terms of a project design. And I know that this is one of the questions that came up in the advisory group, it's like, well. How can we move ahead if we don't know what the standards are going to, to change to? And the updated and adopt, adopt the capital outlay financing formula. Would be useful if somebody made money available to distribute to the schools, but. Uh, that hasn't happened yet. Regarding the construction standards revisions, um, already said that they're likely to ask for an extension. Well, no one, no one knows yet, while some people might have some idea, but we don't know yet. What the changes eventually will be, there's no reason to believe the existing classrooms that we have will meet those standards. We know they're too small. Uh, there's no question about that. Uh, we talked with. Uh, and Cam talked about this a little bit last Wednesday in terms of. You know, as, you know, one of the lead architecture come, uh, firms in the state of Vermont that does schoolwork. They're constantly looking at. Other sources that are probably being looked at at the same time by the agency and updating their standards. And they have, you know, they have. Done their conceptual designs with an eye towards twenty first century. Likely twenty first century standards and not the nineteen ninety six or previous standards that were. Uh, in effect, when they stopped, uh, funding construction, school construction in the state of Vermont. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem likely that, you know, if we move ahead. Make a decision on what we want to do, we move ahead with the design, if there's anything that. In those standards that are going to, um. Affect the actual design itself, Cam explained to us last Wednesday that really what happens. Is that's more of a factor in terms of how much state aid the state would provide. So if they said, if they set a standard at, you know, I don't know, I'm gonna make up a number, uh. Five hundred square feet for a classroom, and we built a six hundred foot square, square foot classroom, the state aid. If it materialized, it would be based on that five hundred square, so they might, we could potentially end up with a slightly larger. Classroom that they might say, well, we're not gonna fund. We're not gonna contribute a hundred, you know, totally towards that, but. We're, we're not talking about big number differences and it's regardless. Spend this much money to renovate the school, we should design instead of a renovation plan. That fits the needs of the community and, and not be. You know, tied to this particular, uh, abstract kind of sand and, um. And then in terms of the capital outlay, it, it'll be nice to have that, but until somebody comes up with money to put into it. I mean, yeah, I don't know, um, you know, they can have a formula. Uh, and then, but unless the federal government ponies up some money or the state identifies resources to fund, you know, state aid to. School construction, there's not gonna be any money to plug in and funnel out. One of the things that I think is. You know, uh, is important to keep in mind is that we move ahead with this project. Based on assuming that it's all gonna be funded locally and then state aid to school construction materializes, we can always take that money and apply it. And, and basically pay down the overall debt, uh, in a sense, or avoid the total overall debt by applying that money when it becomes available. So I know it's, it's, you know, you sit there and say, yeah, it'd be really great if we were voting on a. You know, a fifty million dollar project instead of a seventy million, I'm just making up numbers here, but. We have to do something, I mean, none of, none of this is helping us in terms of making the decision about. What we're gonna do with this building here and the status of this building, the state of this building. Now, and we're, you know, systems. The systems are not, nobody thinks are imminently gonna fail anywhere, but if they do, we have a big problem, the electrical system go. You know, that panel goes out or something like that, or some of the wiring goes to fluid. You don't just go in and patch wire, you're talking about a major renovation, lost, probably lost schools in session. So I don't, my advice to the advisory committee is, we don't wait. For the state to do this work, we need to keep moving ahead, make some, make a decision on what. What you're gonna write, that committee's gonna, or group is gonna recommend to this board, and then the board needs to make a decision on what they want to go forward to publicly. And then we'll see how this all times out. So I'm gonna stop here for now because the rest of this presentation was about finance, and as I said. We're working on fine tuning that.
Okay, thank you, Mark, does, do any board members have any questions for Mark about that? That was pretty clear, thank you, anybody else have any questions for Mark, open to the room? Alright, thank you, Mark. And we'll move on, um. We're gonna move on to a seventy fund request, and Sarah, it looks like you had an updated version of the seventy fund request, could you give Sarah screen sharing power?
Oh, sure.
Have her updated seventy fund request?
There you go.
You think it's necessary that you bring Randy up to, um. Where we can see him and he can talk, you need his help?
I don't know that there's gonna be any questions, sorry, I'm just trying to find.
He may even be there, this may be.
Randy, Randy and Sarah.
He might be zoomed in, he might be in front of.
Okay, I don't know what Randy does when he comes in.
I don't either. I mean, so if you, if you have a question for Randy, we'll have him raise his hand.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah, can you walk us through this?
I'm working on finding my screen share.
Yeah, five days before the meeting, you sent me an updated thing, so I, I, it's your mind.
Nope, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, um, I just have too many tabs open, um, so, talking with Randy. Um, this is a request for a total, um, of eight thousand seven hundred sixty. Looking at supporting the Little League field, so one of the, one of the pieces that they're. Looking at the field itself, uh, the fencing around the field needs to be repaired, but. Um, Randy and Marvin and, you know, anticipating an unknown with what, what will happen with that field and with some of the. Um, building. Project plans, that field potentially relocating, they're looking at getting a temporary fence, um, as the most economical option for right now. So that's the, that's the first two lines, um. Three thousand, um, forty five dollars for those, for the removal, and then that portable fencing that can be used. Through several seasons, um, would be the anticipated for that. Um, doing repair, um. From all, for the different field areas, um, infield prep. Um, all of that, those top ones are in the Little League, um, fields, the ones that are right next to the playground. Um, the piece that actually changed is number five, which is the cedar hedge trimming, um. They had put in an estimated cost, and when I talked to, to Randy yesterday, he anticipated that going up a little bit. It didn't go up a lot, it's three thousand eighty, um, that is something that is done every two years. Um, so this would be the baseball field side of it, and then, um, there's, it's gonna get split in half, and so then. Um, the next one would be the softball field side of it, and it would be about that same request, um, again. And then stay mad. Uh, oh, sorry, the materials for the benches, you, you guys had approved new benches, new aluminum benches, and so this is. Pretter teated lumber to go under those, um. Within the dugouts and then stay Matt down for the town field parking lot, if you've been down there, definitely. Could use a little bit of patching in the town of Danville's willing to do that as well, so. Um, Randy and Marvin, Pritchard are, and Larry and I are hoping for an approval for the eight thousand seven hundred sixty dollar request.
That's, and Sarah, can I just ask one question on, on number? Two, the, is that fencing that goes up and is taken down in the winter?
Yeah, and it can, it can do that, and it can also, I mean, it can be more portable than that even, um. For, for around the Little League fencing, so.
Okay. So this one, it comes from an endowment, and we've talked about before, and we, you know, this is not, this is not coming, this is an endowment. And we've, I do it for a motion, do you, do any board members have any questions for Sarah about this project? Or any of the aspects of it, before we go ahead? Alright, so what I'd be looking for to get this done is I would be looking for a not to exceed number, a motion not to, not, from the seventy fund. Not to exceed eighty seven sixty for the listed repairs. More of a word.
I'll make a motion to approve an amount not to exceed eighty seven hundred and sixty dollars in repairs to the. Fields coming from the seventy fund? I lost my specifics, okay, perfect.
Repairs are making, yeah. Uh, if I can get a second?
Uh, I would.
Thank you, Molly, and, um, this is, again, this is, um, this is an endowment, so this is board business, they've asked us to do this in this endowment. So we'll go ahead and move forward, vote all in favor.
Aye.
I as well approve, um, eighty seven sixty, just the three. Okay, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Randy.
You, I'll send, I'll send the message so that gets processed, Randy, just so you know.
Okay. Let me get Jack right on it, alright, so. We are there now, the next item on the agenda is, um, something with our teachers and collective bargaining. We have, I sent you guys around the, um, specifics regarding that. We add the board, the board may choose, is the way that this is worded in the, um, in the C D A, the board may choose to offer to, um. Teachers an early retirement option, and Mark said, well, based on a recommendation from administration. And so Mark said, let us know if there's recommendation for our actions.
Um. I, I think it's been pretty clear since I became the superintendent that I don't generally support. Your early retirement, uh, offers, uh, we have done, we have done them in the past, they are very expensive for the district. Um, yeah. To be honest, I've never gotten any traction with associations about making, uh, any changes that make them more palatable. Uh, in Danville, your exposure for teachers is. A hundred percent of the health insurance costs of the first year. And sixty six percent of the final year salary paid out over three years, so. Twenty two, yeah, twenty two percent a year or for each of the second years. Given what I said earlier about not being sure. If we are going to have to make some tough decisions about funding. The events and positions, um, I don't think this is a time to be adding cost to, uh, cost of the budget. Over and above, so I don't recommend. That, uh, this board offering early retirement options for support staff, it's different, it's just a flat one thousand dollars. But I'm, you know, again, I'm not. I'll feel strongly about that, the financial exposure on that is not very.
But contractually, they get that if they retire with a certain number of services, that's not something. Support staff.
Oh, you're right, that's right.
In their contract, if they're over extra years, that thousand dollars is theirs for retirement.
Twinfield has a different structure.
It's that, that, when I was going through these contracts, again, I didn't have the current ones because we're in negotiations, but it's pretty complicated. But in this one specifically, this is the only thing that we can offer to teachers.
When I support staff.
It says, this is, they, they, they offered in a separate contract, so the paperwork I sent you, the excerpt of the contract, which is public property. Is the specifics of the contract recall for us to offer. That teachers, if we so choose. And, and then I sent you, and so the recommendation to superintendent is that we do not. And so we're gonna move on having not, does everybody agree? Okay, you guys have any questions about that, just, you can send them to me and I'll. I'll walk you through it again, but it's, that's contracts, this is what the contract says. It's not, we're not required to do it, this does not, this, teachers can still retire, I mean, we're not holding them hostage. Take so retired.
Retired.
This is incentivized retirement for people who love us. A combined total of years in service if we had, if we go forward.
History with it in terms of what it's, has it been years of this coming up every year or?
It, it, it's comes up every year, um. And the last time we did offer here, you know that?
Three, three years ago, one person took it, two years ago, we offered two spots, nobody took them, last year, we did not bring anything. This year, we didn't offer anything, and when we offered two, they took them.
It's not something that teachers are. Wanting or using or in past years, like.
Yeah, it depends, because every year, you may or may not have teaching degrees now. So not all teachers are eligible even.
Like the retirement, so. We have to have twenty years of service inside the building, you have to be over the age of fifty four hours, Twinfields, you have, with quite a different. You have to, your number has to be seven, and then within, for, for a number of years, we had someone whose number was in the nineties, and so. At some point, that person retired. That person retired, and. Not early. Anyway, so nobody took it, nobody took it, and this year, we don't have it at all. Okay, good. Okay, now, I want to talk about the student representative search, that. This, this came out in the principal's report, I'm gonna show you a letter that we got from, uh, a prospective. Student representative that does not meet the criteria. The criteria for a student representative, if we're looking for a junior or a senior, we're looking for them last fall, the junior or senior, last spring rather. And so this person who is, um, who is applying is a tenth grader, who does not yet meet the criteria. And she's not here tonight because she had a ball game. And so I'd like to see if I can figure out, uh, it was, the principal asked me at one point, do you think you could interview her separately from the meeting? And I said, I don't want to act unilaterally in this case, because I don't, I don't know what the board's gonna say. And so it's, I think that we, that we have Brooke here to come to meetings and do what we're doing before, and her name is Brooke, she has a piece of paper. It's a, I'm not saying her name out of turn, her name is Brooke, something, hey, I just called Brooke.
Gendron Hale.
Brooke, Gendron?
Gendron, yeah.
Gendron, Brooke Gendron Hale, and she is interested in it to a degree, but there are, um, she's, she's a tenth grader, so there's lots of, there's lots of parsing in there. I wanted to see, I wanted to try this out, see if I would like it, that sort of a thing. I would want a tenth grader to come see what we're doing and how long you have to sit here, because this is, this is a test of your patience. As a tenth grader, the work can be rewarding, but this is a test of somebody's patience, wouldn't you agree? Wouldn't you, wouldn't you agree, you're not even a tenth?
So, and, and you would have to make an acceptance.
I, I, so before we do any action, we have to, we have to make an accepted policy, which we can agree to do. When it's an action item, but in the meantime, I would like to talk to Thomas a little bit about what he thinks. We could do better so that, so that when we speak to her, that we have an idea of what we, what we're gonna try to do better going forward. And, um, so I'd like to, for this month, I'd like to, um, table this because we don't have a candidate who meets our, meets our criteria, and there's nobody here. Okay, there, there's specifically not a person here that we could change our criteria and make them set forth. And you're definitely policies, I'm not. I'm not getting in trouble.
I know. Can I?
Alright.
Can I say something? So, um, so Larry put this out several, several times, he did have one, I believe, junior who then backed out. Um, of this, so, you know, I'm sure he's willing to. Revisit, if it's gonna come up again, um, revisit it with the students, but I did want, I did want that to be known too, that there was one other, but. They did not choose to stay.
Sure. Right, we're going, we're going fishing, and it's the first of the year, and then people are busy doing stuff, and the activities are active, and activities are busy, and so we have to try to find somebody. To do this, and it, it's okay if we take some time to do it, to find somebody who is, fits the criteria, but also somebody who wants to do it, we can make an exception if somebody wants to. But we don't want to just grab somebody after they're it, because she might not want to do it, she sits in one meeting. Okay, we agreed, I'm gonna table this for now, for one month. Just a murmur of assent, and I'm good on that one. Uh, future agenda items, something interesting on the, public input first, public input, anybody? Raise your hand if you're up there. Hearing none, moving on, uh, future agenda items. Hearing none, moving on. Future agenda items. What do I have sitting here that I don't know that I have? I'm going to look at advisory group update.
Student rep.
Student rep, can we put on there a possible, looking at a possible change to the policy too?
On student rep, yeah, so.
Just to make sure that it's on there ahead of time.
Potential action. Okay.
Let me put marks.
I'll add it when I know.
He, he gets to see the paper in the middle of the month. He's the one that's going to see the paper in the middle of the month, so that, that may come up, and he has, he has the proper thing that we added, and we were going to see if we could draft for. So we don't have to have that now. Building advisory updates on there, and I'll go through the old minutes. This is the part that I didn't do, that's why we missed that one thing. I'll go through the last year's agendas and see what we missed. But for now, that's what we have, those two things to add on to the agenda for next month and we'll go. All right, so that next meeting day, do, Mark, so a quick question on the next meeting day. You don't anticipate having, this is, which is going normal, the budget is going to go to the CCSU, we were talking about budget CCSU.
Yeah, so we're going to try to do, we're going to try to bring the CCSU budget. My things are a couple more weeks on it, so I don't, we're not going to have the budget itself for next week. We are. Two weeks, two weeks from now, we're not going to have that. We have some other work that we're going to propose to the SU board related to budgeting. And included some education on how the actual budget is structured.
So by our next, by Danville's next meeting, that's. Which is the second, the first Monday of November, which I'm looking up right now as fast as I can. First Tuesday, yeah, first Tuesday, excuse me, first Tuesday of November. And that is November the first, so by November the first, we won't have it, so.
We won't have, I don't think. If we, if we happen to get the issue, we might call a special meeting, the SU board. At least a thorough review, but I don't think we'll have the budget.
We'll have a local budget. So the CCXU budget, these are local budgets, you guys will both turn that, it's just you. So we won't have that on the agenda probably, but after November the first, then we start putting our heads on a swivel for special meetings regarding budgets. So that's, that's just the one thing I wanted to mention about upcoming meetings, is there's a potential for an extra one thrown in there, but it's budgeted. And we're a little bit ahead as opposed to having any extra meetings in January. Okay, pass that. Before we adjourn, we have to have an update. That was in an executive session for VSA three thirteen seven, so all you delicious members of the public, thank you for coming, appreciate it. Off you go. Go ahead, listen to. I'm going to send you an email.
Okay, so Andrew, Chelsea, Nancy, and Randy. Excellent as well.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. I'm going to send you an email too.
Okay.
It's been great.
Chelsea, I don't know if you heard that. I'm going to remove you from the meeting. She went away.
She's doing the Randy thing. She's logging in, getting the credit. Putting them per diem hours. Okay, door shut. Everybody's gone. I'll entertain a motion going to executive session pursuant to VSA, one VSA three thirteen seven for. Residency. Time three.
Um.
Go ahead, Melissa.
No, go ahead.
Just say so moved.
So moved.
I said the dirty trick. Can somebody second for me?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I as well. So we're not in executive session.
Okay, we're back on the record at seven twenty four. From executive session.
Okay. Okay, and now coming out of executive session, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to. Extend family choose residency for fourteen days and.
Exemption, resident.
What I think that was.
Yeah, say resident, you said, you said residency. We get in house.
I move to give family two. A fourteen day.
Extension.
Extension.
On the residency.
On their residence. The exception. And to have us hold a special meeting. To discuss in the second session.
Not that one. Just, just, just the first fifteen days, and we'll discuss these later.
Okay, so I move to approve the extension for family choose residency exemption. All right.
And I will second that.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're the only one, Lisa.
Yeah.
I thought you were typing it, so I figured you could just reread it.
All the question, all the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that does that, and we have everything settled. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty.
All right, there's one motion to adjourn. I need a second.
I will second.
Me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I as well, meeting adjourned at seven twenty. Six, so.
All right.